You're listening to the We Are Libertarians Podcast Network. Find all of our shows at wearelibertarians.com. You're listening to the We Are Libertarians Network. Learn more at wearelibertarians.com.
Okay. Let's give the second amendment one place in the head of time. In the Henry County Code, we're doing section 154.001 through 154.107, and replacing the section with the text that was attached and marked as Exhibit A to the Resolution Number 2018-06-13, which was adopted on June 13, 2018 by the Commissioners. There's a second part to this, which is the ordinance amending the Henry County Code by amending the text set forth in Exhibit B to Resolution Number 2018-06-13 to the beginning of section 150.165A, the Henry County Code. I will read both these ordinance amendments first. In order to submit the Henry County Code, whereas on June 13, 2018, the Board of Commissioners of Henry County initiated their proposal to amend the text to the Henry County zoning code by repealing section 154.001 through 154.107 of the Henry County Code and replacing such provisions with the text set forth on Exhibit A attached to the resolution. And whereas on August 7, 2018, the Henry County Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on a proposal voted to certify the proposed to the Board of Commissioners with no recommendation. And whereas the Board of Commissioners of Henry County has determined that the Henry County zoning code should be amended as completed by the proposal, now therefore the order as follows. Section 154.001 through 154.107 of the Henry County Code are hereby repealed. Sections 154.001 through 154.107 are hereby replaced with the text set forth on the document attached to this ordinance and marked as Exhibit A. And the text shall set forth on the attached Exhibit A is hereby made an ordinance in the county. The text set forth on it shall become part of the county code and be effective upon passage and publication of the requirements by law. An ordinance amended in the Henry County Code, whereas on June 13, 2018, Board of Commissioners of Henry County, Indiana, initiated their proposal to amend the text of the Henry County zoning code by adding text set forth in Exhibit B attached to the resolution to the beginning of section 150.165A of the Henry County Code. And whereas on August 7, 2018, the Henry County Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on a proposal voted to certify the proposal to the Board of Commissioners within February. And whereas the Board of Commissioners of Henry County has determined that Henry County zoning code should be amended as completed by the proposal. Now therefore, the order as follows. The text set forth on the document attached as Exhibit B shall be added to the beginning of section 150.165A of the Henry County Code. The text set forth on Exhibit B shall be effective upon passage as required by law and publication as required by law. We have previously held numbers of public meetings on the subject of WITs, including meetings that allow for unlimited public open comment. We have held meetings where the existing WITs proposal was reviewed line by line. We have received hundreds of emails and letters on the subject. The Commissioners have spoken with countless residents in the county and other residents regarding WITs. We have reviewed thousands of pages of written materials on WITs. In short, it is my belief that we have provided ample opportunity for input and study on the subject before proposing revisions to the county code. Nevertheless, we will allow a brief 30-minute of additional public comments on this issue prior to taking action on the proposed revisions. We will allow each speaker two minutes to address the Commissioners. This allowing the maximum amount of people to speak. Each speaker will be asked to observe the following guidelines. This is an opportunity to address. It is not a press conference, cross-examination, or debate. Questions directed to the Commissioners or others in attendance will not be answered. Comments should be related to the proposed revision of the code and should not be personal attacks on any person. Persons, please refrain from clapping, cheering, or other making noise during or after a person's comments. Each speaker should state his or her name and county residence prior to giving remarks. If these guidelines are not followed in a proper manner, they are not intended to be used in the county's main course of public comment. Period. At this time, I have, according to the bottom of the wall, 6:35. Anybody who would like to speak?
Martha Bradler, Phillipsburg. Gentlemen, I cannot reveal. I have given you so much documentation, we have nothing. And then there was concerning groundwater. I have talked to many of those studies that I know that you have done. We have that TransCanada pipeline, high-consequence area. I have sent an email, a survey, many, to place videos, offer strengths, and tune out safety buffers. I don't want us to say.
I have sent letters, emails, spoken to you, some indirectly, some directly. There are numerous grammatical errors, spelling errors, formatting errors, and places that just plain need clarification in your proposed ordinance. Not only that, anything that had to do with safety. You took the recommendations put forth by a big Blue River Wind Energy Company in the ordinance that you have proposed to you. You have the opportunity to correct these and many other problems which I have pointed out to you. Once you make changes, that recommendation will be sent to the Planning Commission, which they have to address within 45 days. And then it comes back to you just like the current proposed ordinance. So it wouldn't take a long time to make this right. And as I said before, you need to amend this ordinance to make it safe, protect the health and property values and property rights of the people of Henry County. It's the right thing to do.
My name is Gary Rogers. I'm an local business owner in Newcastle. And if you pass this ordinance as it is, with all the grammatical errors and the setbacks as they are, you will have, with a stroke of a pen, created permanent easements. Remember, I showed all three of you those easements. You haven't even seen them. You haven't seen the easements. None of you had looked at them until I put them in front of you. A portion of you looked at them. And you didn't even know what they all were. You didn't know what they meant. You've done no due diligence, zero. But you read a list of things you've done? No, it's all whitewashed. You will create permanent easements on every rural property in Henry County, thereby reducing their values. And so I would encourage every rural person in the county to object to their assessment at the next assessment period and have it reduced for the easements that you three gentlemen have created and have their net property taxes reduced. That will be thanks to you. This is the single most devastating ordinance that I can imagine for Henry County. And it will be your legacy, and you will be the three most hated men in the county.
David Bradner, Henry County. Didn't sleep last night, so excuse my tired voice. I always conducted my business in a hopefully successful way where I harm nobody and help people along the way. I'm not against renewable energy. I find that the setbacks are totally unnecessarily too close to people's homes. They will leave out of their home. I belong to the Central Indiana Urban Estate Investor Substitution. I have not met anybody there who hasn't just turned around and laughed and tell them to put a five or six-hundred-foot tower and spin it to boot. No offense to people that aren't able to hear, but I think it's appropriate this lady's here today because I feel like everything that's been said is all on deaf ears. And I respect all you guys. I know this has been hard on you. But this is the most devastating thing that can happen to our county. Absolutely don't want my property values to be destroyed, and I don't want my health. We have a doctor here in town that has said this isn't good for us. So, you know, I think I would want to listen to him. I would implore you to look again at the setbacks and realize, I don't know how many of you are going to live to next to one of these 1,500 feet away. I don't know if anybody that's voted for these is going to live that close to them. I'm not going to Florida this winter. I'm not able to escape that like some are. And I would implore you to look at this again. Mainly the setbacks. Thank you.
Hello, Roman Cherf, Canada. The thing that strikes me about this ordinance is it is tearing. You're stealing my property rights by running this setback up across my property to my house. It is tearing. You're stealing the value of my property from me. It's tearing. I am extremely upset. If this was several hundred years ago, the nature of the upline that you see would be vastly different. We're here peacefully to ask you to please do not oppress this county with this tearing.
My name is Phil Gibson, Strongford Township. I just heard a cricket. I just heard a cricket go off. One of the things that you won't hear in a field of investor winters is crickets. Why? Because of the noise level. We have to be very careful with that noise level. We have to be very careful with that setback. We have to be very careful with where we position these so-called wonderful turds. This thing is greed here. That's the only thing that drives this is money. Pay attention and listen because there's a lot of people out here that have done a lot of work, a lot of homework. And they know what they're talking about. And there's a lot of damage that could be done by these things.
Ted Rantino, the County Commissioner. You guys passed this ordinance as a threat tonight. You're going to make 50 to 100 people, some of the richest people in this county, very happy. But there are at least, by conservative estimate, 7,000 people. No doubt about it. Most of them who put you in those seats, they're going to be very unhappy.
That's a conference. Harrison Township. I believe you, Mr. Conk, Mr. Baker, and Mr. Davis, understand there are health and safety issues associated with high WITs. You have demonstrated your knowledge of these issues by writing into the revised WITs ordinance 2,648 from municipalities, nursing homes, and hospitals.
How much was that?
I believe it was 2,648. Now, if you correct. Somebody else in here?
2,500.
Thank you for the correction. 2,500 setback for municipal hospitals and nursing homes. You are blatantly discriminating against the 20,000 rural residents who have the same population as nursing homes, hospitals, and municipalities. The aged, the sick, the weak, the uneducated. You know there are health and safety issues. The WITs ordinance proposed is a reduced setback from what our previous ordinance has. And I believe that you have written that ordinance to punish the people who are against winters in Henry County. Make no mistake, we will not forget what you have. Make no mistake, we will not forget.
David Chambers, Harrison Township, Dallas. I have sat through several of these meetings myself, listened to a lot of the rhetoric that has been proposed, that has been stated. I've talked to people in Madison County that have been in the WITs post-flying and realized that a lot of what we're saying is merely dissatisfaction with not wanting to look at them. I would mention that they say, you know, land values. I don't know if that's true or not, to be honest with you, because if I were looking at a piece of property that had a winter on it, I would say that is positive myself, because there's income. The other thing is, there's these high-tension electric towers that are out in rural areas. I dare say that most people don't know how many that drove by just being in Newcastle this evening. And I farm around probably half a dozen of them myself. And most of the farmers in the area have to farm around them. They pay nothing to us except an inconvenience to farm around. So, in a way, the WITs are a way of coming back and saying, okay, let's help the farmers out and offset some of the inconvenience that they would have for some of the other things that are in this county. I appreciate all the work that you Commissioners have done and apologize for what you have done in this ordinance and ask that you pass it to see. Thank you.
My name is Wayne Foster. I'm Harrison Township. Yesterday, I sent you gentlemen an email about fire dangers in WITs. Did you receive that? Did you review it? Okay, then, I wonder, when you have best, who makes 70% of the WITs, in their handbook, on page 10, recommend that nobody or any building be within 1,640 feet. How in the world you can come up with a safe setback distance to 1,500 feet? Let people measure a fire. These things do catch fire. All you have to do is Google on the internet, and you'll see a burn. Now, you may often ask, how often did this happen? It doesn't matter how often this happens. It can happen. And if it does happen, and it could very well happen right in Henry County. Imagine this, on a windy day, in dry conditions, or right toward your house, or someone below down there in the community. And their house comes down. Somebody killed. I mean, if you researched this, I would see how to come up with 1,500 feet from the base of a foundation when you should. And always leave from the property line, because if you go on the internet and Google it, you'll find from Europe, all across this country, people have realized, communities, I mean, county commissioners, states, countries have realized that these setbacks need to be from the property line to protect the people. I mean, setting from a residential is obsolete. All you have to do is look. And I hope tonight that you will change this and go from the property line. Thank you.
I'm Kelly Maradah. I'm in Henry County Township, and I just want to ask, my husband, and I farm, lived here for quite a few years. I do not appreciate 1,550 feet being measured from the foundation of our homes. 1,550 feet? If that's what you want to measure, measure it from the property line, not the foundation of a home. I don't know what else to say. There's, it's been asked before, but I object to 1,500 feet from the foundation of anyone's home.
Frank Giall, Jefferson Township. I too, when this first started a few years back, we went to several places, Randolph County, Elwood area, Tipton area. And we too spoke with numerous residents. We randomly selected them. We made sure that we also talked to people that had some on their property. There were more complaints than just, it doesn't look nice. There was a young girl that couldn't do her homework in her house because of the shadowed filter. There was another lady that had issues with migraines. There are people over in Randolph County that complained about the sound, that it had to have porches built on their house to block the shadowed filter and such. This is not made up. I also questioned how you can measure setback from a moving target. As Amy pointed out at the last meeting, when those blades are rotated, that changes your setback distance. So in actuality, part of the time, we're going to have less than 1,500, depending on the direction that those blades are pointed. I also questioned how you can have zoning from the edge of town, but yet my foundation. Why are the people that live at the edge of town, why do they have more rights than I do? I also want to make sure, reiterate, bring back this was presented to the Commissioners two years, seven years and a half ago. But yes, it does impact property values because we had the loss of the sale of the second home that we were trying to sell. When we disclosed that there was a chance of winter mind, you know, industry coming into the community, they had made a full offer. And when we disclosed that, they withdrew their offer. It was several months later when we finally sold it at a lesser amount. We had to continue to pay on the property taxes. We had to continue to pay our mortgage. So we're losing money, not just at the lower sale price, but also the expenses and bills that we had to pay. So, and I still have copies of that if you guys liked it, but you all have been presented with that before us. So again, these things that, you know, oh, it's just an appearance. No, there's a whole lot more to it. How do we measure sound? And we don't have the capability to do that now. Our old ordinance, I asked to help the burden, and I asked emergency management, do we have the type of equipment to measure the sound properly? And they said, no, we don't have it. And says, is there anybody else that could be a county employee that could have it? No. So how are we going to measure the sound? We have an unenforceable set of rules here. It needs to be reviewed again to look at the equity and the ability to enforce. And if these things are so And if these things are so great, why doesn't every county in Indiana have them? Why are counties instead increasing their setbacks, putting moratoriums on? If this is such a great thing, why isn't, why aren't they everywhere? I would ask them to stop that.
Martin Tony, Harrison. I am a deep red state conservative. I am as deep red state conservative as you can find. And I look across this nation right now, there's a wave in the nation that their government is giving it back to the people. And the people have a voice in this country. And you guys don't care if an art after you for this office. And I ask that you look at that art and look at the way that the people, that that art is representing back to the people of this country, of this state, of this county. And I was a little taken back a couple of weeks ago at the planning when Mrs. Beach gave a heartfelt request. I may not agree with a lot of things that she has, but she gave a heartfelt request that you guys look at and have concerns with the setbacks. And when I talk to people after you guys afterwards, and I've talked to at the county fair, nobody paid any attention to that. I mean, it was like it was anything that happened. And no comment was given back on it. And it was like, well, you know, it's too big for that now. And I thought her request was very sincere. Thank you.
That's the most generous, township. He sort of stole my thunder, but that was something I wanted to follow up about because that's a question I posed to commissioners two weeks ago. The planning commission, Mrs. Beach, Mrs. Clark both indicated that there are no recommendation vote was with the caveat that setbacks be raised and they expressed deep concern over that. Mrs. Beach, I don't think you own the spot, was that correct? Mike Kennedy, Rapid? No comment? Okay. I don't think it's troubling here, I have to apply procedures, but I did ask, and Mr. Yanis, you did indicate you would talk to Mrs. Beach. Mr. Baker, you did as well. Did that, am I allowed to ask that conversation took place? Okay. Are you two able to speak to that in any way? To address concerns?
I did speak to her.
So, I'm not trying to get you in here, I'm just trying to understand. Is there anything else?
That's right. That's right. I didn't speak to her.
Okay. I just want to add one other point. If everybody in this room is wearing white t-shirts and pulling signs, if they're wrong, if we're all wrong about wind, and it's a wonderful thing for our community, okay, maybe we look silly. Maybe we're embarrassed, and something happens on the wrong side of that. Okay? But if you guys are wrong, if they're wrong, if the east siders are wrong, this is going to be an absolute disaster.
All right, Ron, remind you of the town. I just want to make this real quick and simple. After I read the paper with your three comments, it seems to me that you feel an infrasound and shadow flicker, things that just don't happen. You chose to not put that in our ordinance, yet the wind companies choose to put that in their contracts that the farmers or anybody who experiences that cannot complain without being sued. So, that's puzzling to me that the wind companies protect themselves, but you guys don't want to protect the citizens of this county. Just throwing that out there. If it doesn't happen, then why are, if you're so confident it doesn't happen, then put it in the ordinance. Same thing with the property values. We're all so confident nobody's going to lose property value, put it in the ordinance. That's how you make things legal and permanent. If you don't think it's going to happen, put it in the ordinance.
I'm Mike Avery, Harrison Township. I just want to say, number one, not all farmers are resourceful. I've been in Randolph County like a lot of people. And pretty much all the discoverables, you can't really tell. But sitting in your pickup truck next to one of the tenants, deciding whether to invest, do or bet. There's a lot of unknowns here. There's very few people in this county that have lived close to a wind turbine. Some of them have spoken here at these meetings. That should be worth something. There's just a lot of things we don't know. But the way this ordinance is written, it's a gamble. And if things would work out, maybe that's fair. But I think it's a big gamble for us, for things that we as a majority, we don't know anything about. Thank you.
Heidi Swiker, Harrison Township. We live west of town and we farm and we get farm subsidies. So, that's one point I want to make as we butt off to something. Farmers ought to get farm subsidies for their grain. Another thing is, someone referred to rhetoric as what has been brought forth at all these meetings. I've never come forward at the meetings before, but I have sat there and wondered at how much research these people have spent, how much time and money and hours, just hours of work. I'm trying to find the research that is true for this issue. And so I take offense for them because I am indebted to them for what they tried to present to you. And lastly, my point is, you act like it's not sensible just because we don't want to look at them. Wow. In my opinion, the aesthetics of the narrative is important. Kate Cudd doesn't have, they don't have a wind farm because they're rich, they didn't want to look at it. A high-class living area in Pennsylvania around the lake, they didn't have to take the wind farm because it was not aesthetically pleasing and would hurt their tourism or different things. So, I just want to say, there's nothing wrong with not wanting to look at them. Because I often enjoy looking out at the horizon, looking at it. And just because there's a bunch of electric lights that run here and there doesn't mean you throw more stuff up there. And it's not going to matter. So, I still say, I understand you want the wind farm here, that you think that that's something someone has a right to do. And it is on their property. But it's brought up at the last meeting. I pay my taxes to the property line. So, my grandma should be protected from the property line. I shouldn't have to worry about men in the danger zone. And so, I still request the property setback from the line.
My name is Rob Ritchie, Jefferson Township. And I think there's no shame in saying no. Gentlemen, please, I ask you to just say no.
At this time, we will move on to the... And I will make the motion. I will make the motion to amend Henry County's zoning code under the table 154.001 and 154.0107, and replace it with the attachment, attached to the zoning. Motion by Burge Baker, second by Tim Conk. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Second portion of this will be, I will make the motion to amend the zoning code as established in the beginning. Second. Motion by Burge Baker, second by Tim Conk. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I want to make a motion, please, as well.
Thank you for listening to the Boss Hogg of Liberty, which is part of the We Are Libertarians network. I am Chris Spangle, and I am the founder of this network. And I invite you to listen to all of our shows, which you can find at wearelibertarians.com or by searching for these in your podcatcher. The flagship show is the We Are Libertarians podcast, where we apply libertarian principles to current events. The Brian Nichols Show is a conversation amongst Republicans, Democrats, Libertarians, independents, as they talk about what is happening in the news. And we have many other podcasts, like The Chris Spangle Show, Upward, The Cost, Raw Audio Politics, Miranda's World, and Tad Talk, which is quite a ride. So, check all of these out. Go to wearelibertarians.com, and you can check out all of our great podcasts. Thanks for listening.
Thank you for listening to the We Are Libertarians network. Get our other shows at wearelibertarians.com.